Welcome everyone to November 17th, 2025. 6:00 PM, City Council Chambers, 111 East Maple. The invocation of tonight will be given by Steve Ballantyne, Assistant Pastor at Mountain Zion Restoration Branch Church. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I don't see Steve, so Dan O'Neil is going to be very kind to pinch-hit for us tonight. And we're going to give him just a moment to pull up his prayer that he had prepared. Just in case this moment occurred. But I am incredibly grateful that he does that, so.
Dear Heavenly Father, we gather today to seek your wisdom and guidance as we serve our community. We recognize the weight of the responsibility on our council members' shoulders and ask that you grant them discernment and integrity and commitment to the well-being of all of our citizens. May our decisions reflect value of justice, compassion, and fairness. May we prioritize the need of the vulnerable and protect the marginalized and work towards the common good. Bless our community with peace and unity and prosperity. May we be a place where everyone feels welcome, valued, and respected. Guide us as we navigate the challenges and the opportunities. May our actions bring honor to your name. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Mr. Dan O'Neil, thank you very much for giving the invocation at a very, very short notice. So you stepped in and did a great job. Next, we have the presentation for the I-STAR Award. Oh, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember McCandless?
Here.
Councilmember Wiley?
Here.
Councilmember Vought?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here.
Thank you very much. Now that brings us to the I-STAR Award. It's going to be awarded to Taylor Corwin, Water Production Maintenance Laborer in the Municipal Services Department. He is the I-STAR recipient for November 2025. And so whereas, the Service Recognition Program recognizes outstanding performance and exemplary acts of service by employees of the City of Independence, and whereas, an employee committee selects the I-STAR Independence Service and Teamwork Above Responsibilities Award, recipient for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best represent public service and teamwork. And whereas, Service Recognition Committee has selected Taylor Corwin in the Municipal Services Department as the I-STAR Award recipient for November 2025. Now therefore, be it resolved by this City Council of Independence, Missouri as follows. The City Council of the City of Independence, Missouri joins in recognizing Taylor Corwin as the I-STAR recipient for November 2025. Let's please give him a big round of applause. We've also got three employees recognized for years of outstanding service. And just wanted to announce their names that they, that they're here. So in recognition of 36 years of outstanding service to the City of Independence, Mark Watkins, Fire Captain, and so we'll give him a certificate of appreciation for that. We don't expect him to be here tonight, but just wanted to announce that he did all those years of service. We also have recognition of 19 years of outstanding service to the City of Independence, Jennifer Paulston, Assistant Health and Animal Services Director. And just want to say thank her for her 19 years of outstanding service to the city. And we also have recognition of 20 years of outstanding service for Brian Flavin, Master Police Officer, and his certificate of appreciation. So we will present those to, to, we'll get their departments to present them to those folks. And we want to thank them for their work. So very good, we've got two citizens' requests tonight. The first is Becky Haake. Becky Haake, please come forward and you have five minutes. And also, could I have a motion for the resolution for the I-STAR recipient, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Got a second? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. That way, Taylor, it is official. All right. Becky, you have five minutes. Please state your name and your address, please.
Becky Haake, 10516 East 26 Terrace. I'm here tonight to talk about Resolution 25108, which states the city's position on how they would like to see the 2026 state legislature vote on the agenda. One of them is on the city's opposition of the state limiting the amount of sales tax the city can charge. Two, the city also opposes the state to expand the sales tax exemptions. And three, the city also opposes any changes to SIDS and TDD regulations. We've heard our city council talk about, a lot about affordability and ways to help our residents, and especially seniors, from becoming homeless. But recommendations that they are making right now for the state will do anything help, anything but help the affordability issue, as they would make matters worse, where taxes could go up. Which food is also included in this. They oppose the state's limits that limit the amount of sales tax the city can charge. Currently, it is 2.875 on everything you purchase, but if allowed, they could raise the sales tax and it would cost more. I believe we have to have a vote on that, but I'm not positive. The council also opposes the state's plan to phase out the tax on food sales and diapers and any other items the state deems necessary. This would certainly help put money back in people's pockets. This council opposes any changes to the current legislations for SIDS and TDDs. The state of Missouri has been looking at the budgets and audits of the current SIDS and TDDs in the state and is recommending more regulations and accountability on these entities. This is something that is very much needed in our city, as we currently have over 20 SIDS and TDDs, and each one of them adds an extra tax to the citizens. The TDDs are transportation district, tax districts, and the SIDS are community improvement districts. And these taxes can either be by rebate on their property taxes or added to a sales tax for purchases made in these districts. The last year alone, the SIDS collected an additional $12 million from just the sales tax for the, on the SIDS and TDD, on the SIDS alone. You would think that much money, we would see a lot of major changes around the city. But for the most part, we don't. I will say there is one that I drive through in their area, and I noticed some changes. And I know the little extra tax money here and there is helping, because you can see what they're doing. One SIDS reported on their budget that none of the additional tax money went to improvements. It went for legal fees, bank fees, insurance, for directors and officers of the SIDS and the city administration fee. Not one penny for any improvement. I would also say that all the SIDS have the large amount of money going to the, for these fees. Another SIDS purchased a business, three buildings to be torn down. Went a couple blocks away, there are several vacant lots available to build on. Money was spent on Blue Street sides, at some, the intersections on Nolan Road. Now they're going to be giving SIDS money to replace HVAC systems, replace electrical systems, mow yards and pick up trash. As a homeowner, this is called maintenance. The only people that get to vote on how the money is spent is the property owners, which in most cases is not the business owners. They own the property, collect the rent, and in some cases have the SIDS pay for the upkeep and repairs. But don't even bother to get a business license with the city. With this many SIDS and TDDs, it is very hard to shop in Independence and not pay these taxes. There is not a posting that you're shopping in a SIDS area or that you're being charged extra taxes, or how much taxes you're being charged. These extra taxes are paid, are paid on groceries, gasoline, and even your morning coffee.
You have one minute.
With no limit on these, how many SIDS the city can have or how many SIDS can be in one area. We have one area that has three SIDS in it, same shopping area. And so you can see how this accountability is needed in this. These three issues that the city council is asking for will not help the affordability issue in our city, and they could make it worse. If allowed, more taxes, which will hurt our seniors and our young families the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly Cannon. Kelly, please come forward and state your name and address, please, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Cannon. I live at 17111 East 31st Terrace South here in Independence. And once again, rather than stand up here and talk a lot, I'll just hand over work to this gentleman, and he can pass it out to everybody, and maybe at some point, we can discuss some of the topics that I brought up last time, and maybe this time as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I move, move for to accept the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second for the reports, recommendations to be approved. Does anyone want to pull anything for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I would like to pull item one.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought would like to pull item number one.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed. Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to pull item number four and item number eight and Resolution 25802.
Councilmember McCandless is asked to pull item number four. Councilmember McCandless is asked to pull item number eight. And Councilmember McCandless is asked to pull Resolution Number 2, 25802. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you. Number seven, please. Can we pull that?
And that's the one for the $4 million?
The fire station.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other items to be considered separately?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Item number nine.
Okay. Councilmember Fears asked for item number nine to be considered separately. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Going once, going twice, going three times, on any more to be pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the consent agenda, please.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the consent agenda's approved. Seven in favor, zero opposed. If I may, please, even though it may not be in the order that everybody requested, I'm just going to go down through the list as it started and go with item number one. Councilmember Vought, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to address the city manager.
Please.
So this bridge is in my district, and I've had several people reach out to me over the last year about it. So I was curious what caused the delays initially, since it wasn't the consultant?
So the, the delay in the project overall, there was some scope added to do some geotech work for the relocation of the bridge, but it was kind of an unfortunate combination of weather delays, contractor availability, and staff availability. There are quite a few capital projects and equipment replacements, as you're going to vote on another one here this evening, that are actively going on, and this was unfortunately the thing that slid in addition to the consultant's time and availability to come out to do the geotechnical work and some weather issues over the summer.
Okay, thank you for that. And how much of the increase is rate increase versus new work?
This is, by and large, the rate increase. It was eight, roughly eight and a half percent. Again, generalizing, person-to-person charges different rates, but if we were averaging the rates from the 24 to 25, it would have been about an eight and a half percent increase.
Okay, and so this bridge is missed. Is there an estimated timeline on when it might reopen?
For that, I will ask Director Morris Hightie to come forward.
Morris Hightie, Director of Parks and Recreation. The plan is to have the design completed on or before June 30th, so it would be sometime after June would be the ideal schedule.
Okay, thank you very much. I move for approval of item one.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second for approval of item number one. Any further discussion on item number one? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number one.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number one is approved on the consent agenda. This brings us to item number four. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Oops. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be sure to highlight item number four. I, you know, a little confetti would be nice here, but I just would like you to outline what we're going to be doing with these geo-bond dollars and what people should expect and timelines and where they could find out the actual locations.
Okay, so try and get all those pieces covered. Cue the confetti for sure. This is very exciting. This is our largest single expenditure on overlay possibly ever with street sales tax, but certainly at least in the last decade. In going back for the records, when Public Works wasn't even part of Municipal Services, we still weren't dedicating this amount of money. So the geo-bond allows us finally to be able to do that. This particular contract authorizes 54 lane miles to be completed. On an average year, we're 20 at best, often, you know, coming in 17, 18 over the last couple of years. And we do have an active list of streets that we will be posting on our website. There are streets in every district, and just again, to remind council and the public that the criteria to, kind of the line in the sand that we use to determine streets was anything that had a pavement condition index of 40 or below would be eligible to be overlaid under the geo-bond program.
And timing?
Timing. This would be work that is completed in the spring. And then in the spring, late winter, early spring, we'll also bid out the street sales tax program, which would add another two to two and a half million in overlay. But again, separate from the geo-bond projects, and then that work would be completed in fall. So ideally, we have geo-bond work going every spring and street sales tax work going every fall.
And just for people's understanding, can you explain the difference between chip and seal and milling and overlaying?
Sure. So pavement seals, we use a mix of, we don't use chip seal, but we do use scrub seal, micro-surface, and overlay. The seals are meant to be more of a preventative maintenance, and the overlay is considered a restructuring of the, reconstruction of the roadway. So you do the seals to extend the life of that street out to 20, 25 years. Crack filling would be another example of preventative maintenance. So we will overlay these streets, and then as the pavement maintenance program goes on, we will seal these streets to extend that life out as long as possible.
So the overlay is the beautiful street where you get on it and you're like, this is like riding on butter. Okay.
Yes, it is.
All right. I happily move approval of item number four.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second for item number four. Any further discussion on item number four? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number four passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to item number seven. Councilmember Perkins, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is for the interim city manager. Regarding the fire station number eight, which is the oldest and antiquated one that we have here, the amount of money that we're spending, can you explain a little bit on how we received, got to this point that we're able to do these new fire stations and pull that $4 million out of the street sell, or the street sales tax, the fire sales tax that we passed?
That we're not doing.
Yes, thank you.
Definitely not coming out of street sales tax.
Correct.
The fire safety sales tax passed in '21, funds projects, and half of that money funds projects. So roughly $6 million a year is dedicated to capital expenditures of facilities and equipment. We've been saving money to this point, and here we are, ready to, almost ready to break ground on the first of our three active construction projects. So what this particular package before you tonight does is purchases the shell of the building as well as some of the internal components that have long lead times. So think HVAC units, electrical components, and things like that. It will do some small amount of site work, but by and large, shell and internal equipment. We will be back with the full balance of this project, which is roughly a $16 million station in total. The second meeting in January for that, the second component to reach that total.
Thank you. I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion and a second to approve item number seven. Any further discussion on item number seven? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number seven is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to item number eight. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So city manager, can you talk about this? Because it was confusing to me the first time I read it. I know we approved at one point, and I know that was a placeholder, but this was just a bigger dollar than the placeholder, so please address.
Sure. So we did approve a very small amount in the project budget overall. So we did approve a very small amount in the project budget overall, knowing that we would have to come back with this piece once final design was reached and that final internal layout of the floor plan was determined. So what this does is, while we are reusing a great deal of the furniture that was in the utility center, those, that will mostly go into individual offices. The cubicle open workspaces are smaller in this new layout than what was there previously, so this is actually purchasing those additional workstations and some of the other furniture that's more specifically geared to some of the police operations. Unfortunately, tariffs have hit furniture purchases more than any of the other construction items we've seen, and so that is also resulting in this heavy number.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion or questions? Could I get a motion and a second, please?
Excuse me. Thank you. I move approval.
Thank you. Thank you. We've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number eight.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vot?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number eight is passed, seven in favor, zero opposed. If I may interrupt just momentarily, I just got a text, and someone is saying that we're not seeing the meeting on YouTube.
Correct. We're troubleshooting right now, so trying to figure that out. We had a software update recently. We believe that matched with our old archaic software may be part of that. So this is going out over City Seven right now. We're also recording this so we can upload it afterwards.
Okay, so it will be sent out there, just won't be live right now?
Correct. It is on City Seven, but not on YouTube right now. We're troubleshooting right now. I've been in constant communication with our CIO.
Okay, thank you very much. Just wanted to clarify for folks who are asking, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item number nine. Councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, an item that we postponed from two weeks ago. There were questions relative to the scope of the project, the makeup of the, what was being proposed to be put in, in this park. Madam City Manager, would you like to comment on that, or have someone from staff comment on that?
I think I can address it. Just high-level perspective, the question came up about whether ADA-accessible equipment was able to be installed at this location. Unfortunately, at Benton Park, the footprint is too small for that equipment, and the budget didn't allow for that particular replacement. And even had the budget allowed, the footprint doesn't work. That is much larger equipment, just takes up a bigger footprint. We do look at opportunities to install ADA-accessible equipment every time we do one of these replacements, and where we have the space, we absolutely do factor that into the plans. And that actually was discussed today in a meeting about the Parks Master Plan as well, and just making sure that that is considered at every replacement possible.
Thank you. Move approval of item nine, please.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion for item number nine. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on item number nine? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number nine.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vot?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number nine passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to resolution number two, also known as twenty-five dash eight oh two. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And lest I forget, I'll start with move to approve twenty-five, eight oh two.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, could you speak to Bligh Road? This is, I think, the most interesting part of this. It's necessary, but I just want people to understand the reasoning why, and for the neighbors to know that there will be some changes to that road.
I'm going to go ahead and ask Director Tom Skennell to come forward, but while he makes his way to the podium, the fundamental reason for the shift in the road alignment is to create a bigger parcel space for development. So right now, the current Bligh Road location intersects, or cuts right through some of that development area, creating roughly two hundred and two hundred and fifty acres, and this would expand it to something closer to four hundred. But I'm sure that Mr. Skennell can provide you much more detailed information.
Thank you. My name is Tom Skennell. I'm the Community Development Director. As the interim city manager has mentioned, relocating Bligh Road does create a larger, more usable piece of ground for industrial development. As we all know, industrial development likes to have larger buildings to meet the modern needs. So as part of this preliminary plat, Bligh Road will be relocated, beginning south of where the bridge and the overhead power lines cross Bligh Road. Bligh Road, instead of going straight south to tie into Seventy-Eight Highway, will curve over to Little Blue Parkway and intersect with Little Blue Parkway. Again, this is the preliminary plat associated with that. There will be engineering drawings associated with that relocation as part of this plat. We had asked the applicant, North Point, to update the traffic study to look at the geometry, the site distances, all of those things. They were all reviewed by the city's traffic engineer, and everything checked out to meet the engineering standards for this type of roadway.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number two, also known as resolution twenty-five, eight oh two? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vot?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-five, eight oh two, passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us to our regular agenda, and we have a public hearing, and Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the taxable industrial development revenue bonds for the power generation project, full public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, Charlie DeSalle, Assistant City Manager. The council will recall, back in September of 2024, we got into an option-to-lease agreement with the Future Power Company to build power generation within Independence, and tonight's action that you will be reviewing is just inching closer to that reality. Wanted to go over just some high-level facts of why we're doing this, how we got here. As the council's aware, currently, we have an existing load of approximately three hundred megawatts within the city. Of that three hundred megawatts, approximately twenty megawatts is available for us to use for new projects that come in. That's less than seven percent of what we currently have right now. When we look at our current rate class distribution, you'll see, and you know this, residential rate classes make up more than ninety percent of our customers right now. Commercial is just a little over eight percent. Our industrial rate class is less than a tenth of a percent currently today. We get electrical capacity from a few different sources. Just a little over ninety-three megawatts come from our six combustion turbines within the city, about eighty-point-seven-five from the Dogwood, which we are a partner in. The remaining megawatts are all contracted purchase out on the market. So the lack of industrial and large-load customers to bear the transmission and distribution costs. So any utility is going to have those types of costs, and you can see with that ninety percent number that really it's our residential rate classes that are bearing a lot of those costs right now. So looking at opportunity that we've had over the past year, I'm not going to go into detail on the projects that are listed on the first bullet point here, but you can see that those are four relatively big projects that the city went after with the chamber in our economic development partnership to get these projects into Independence. For the most part, we can point to the fact that we did not have available power for these projects as to why they did not come here ultimately. But over the past year alone, about two hundred megawatts of energy that these users would have used, and thousands of jobs ended up going elsewhere because we don't have the power here in our city. Without that local generation capacity, we risk losing the tax-based, tax-based growth and well-paying jobs to our neighboring communities served by larger-scale utilities. I'm going to go into a little bit more here. I'm going to hand it off to Joe Hagendefer, our IPL director, just to go over some of the history on this stuff, and then I'll come back up at the end.
Yeah, Mayor, council, so you guys love the history lessons that we get to go through and talk about how we got here and what things we have and haven't done in the past, right? So leading up to last year was not a surprise of anyone. We've, we've had many studies, many things that led us to come into the decision that we need more power locally in Independence so that we can provide for some economic development. I don't think that's any secret. And started off, 2018, we had Burns &amp; McDonnell present us with a master plan that talked about generation and bringing it into the city and increasing our capacity availabilities. 2020, more of the same IPL operational and performance audit, kind of talked about some long-term strategic plans. 2021, we had power engineers tell us that, hey, the Little Blue Valley, or the Little Blue Power Plant site is actually the best site to put a generation at, and they determined natural gas was going to be the best fit there. We already have electrical infrastructure. We had gas infrastructure. Everything was in place to move that direction. And then in 2024, we had the DKMT Long-Term Strategic Plans that talked about recommending local generation and reinforcing local control as a municipal electric utility. Each of those kind of came to the same conclusion of owning and operating our own power for our own future. And now we talk a little bit about what we have and maybe haven't done as a, as a city. So in March 2022, the city council directed us to negotiate with those net gas turbines and look at acquisitions. Ultimately, we got to the final step and did not move forward with the purchase of those gas turbines. December of 2022, PUAB told us to continue discussing, continue looking at options to develop generation on an ongoing basis and what kind of options we would have in front of us. 2024, city council received those DKMT studies and then held some sessions for public input and ultimately decided to own and operate this municipal electric utility moving forward. In 2024, we approved the UET Ventures Option-to-Lease Program that Charlie just talked about, our Assistant City Manager. And then in 2024, the city council voted to retain IPL and endorsed a path to reinvest in our electric utility moving forward. So utilization of private investment. So I know that there's questions out there. Well, we've decided, let's go ahead and move forward owning and operating our own electric utility. We've passed on gas turbines before. Why don't we just go back out to the market and buy some gas turbines and own and operate those? I don't think it's any secret that things in the electric utility industry are very expensive, and that kind of heavy capital investment will require bonding and could ultimately lead us to put the weight on the residential ratepayers of Independence. So privately financing this and, and us partnering up with private investment allows us to take that pressure off of the residential customer rates and lower our, I would say, our risk in the overall timeframe of that generation. So the city will retain ownership of the land. We gain future ownership flexibility, so at the end of the lease, we will have options to purchase this power plant. Private partners will fund and construct the plant. So again, we're not going out for bonds and taking that debt on as a city. We will be the, I would say, the first action or the first person to be able to say yes or no if we want to be able to purchase that power from a, from those generation plants. And then it allows greater competition where we can complete with large-scale investor-owned utilities, which has been a challenge for us for a long time. And then the last item I have is to talk about kind of who Independence Power Partners is. So it's a makeup, kind of a trifecta of three different companies that bring decades of experience. Exegent Energy, you can read these own, over sixty years of combined generation development, have six thousand megawatts of generation completed to date and deployed over six billion dollars of capital. So this is not their first rodeo in building a power plant. They've been doing it for many, many years. UET, or United Energy Trading, has twenty-five years in the natural gas trading experience. So with us looking at natural gas generation, it made sense to bring on some partners who understand the gas industry. Bringing fuel to, to your power plant is just as important as what turbine you pick and how you hook it up electrically. And then Rainbow Energy Marketing has thirty-plus years of wholesale power trading experience. So it makes sense for us to partner with somebody who has experience on the marketing side of the Southwest Power Pool. They have over two thousand megawatts of generation under development and twelve hundred megawatts of generation under operation via affiliates. So all three of these companies have, bring decades of experience from the sides of building, constructing, owning, operating, providing fuel, and then long-term agreements with power providers. Is there any questions with any of that before I leave the podium?
Please proceed.
So Joe, just to be clear, those three companies with all that experience came together and formed Independence Power Partners?
That is correct.
And then that's who we would be dealing with in this situation?
That is correct.
Anyone else have other questions? If you could go back to the last slide, please, and I think it's bullet point number three, private partners fund the construction of the plant, no taxpayer or ratepayer debt. So, you know, these companies are obviously going to go out to the marketplace and, and get bonds.
Yes.
But the question I have is, we're not in any way guaranteeing these bonds. They're taking, the Independence Power Partners are taking the risk completely and absolutely.
That is correct. So they will go out, get the financing for this project, build and construct this project, and then give us the first opportunity to buy the power off of the project. If, if we decide that we don't want the power off of this project, they have strong security, they can just go to the market and be able to sell that energy outright if, if necessary.
Because there's such a demand in the marketplace right now that it'd be easy for them to sell it in this, and so.
That is correct.
Really what you're, what I'm hearing you say is this is a really elegant solution for us as a city, is we're not taking on the risk, but yet we're having the opportunity to, to develop energy that in case an opportunity came along in the valley, we would have that opportunity to possibly do something there.
It gives us immediate availability to local power, locally-generated power, to provide for any economic development opportunities that come our way without taking on the risk and bonding and taking out loans ourself. So yes.
So it doesn't put any risk to IPL and its balance sheet?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Anyone else have other further questions? Please proceed.
Lest anybody think that this has not been a well-considered project, you've been actually working on this since 2018. Obviously, much of this is not in the public eye because it's thinking through markets and whether we'd be able to sell generation. That was some of the early questions with the first set of combustion turbines was it would have to be financed at that point by the ratepayers, which is, I think, where some of the heartburn came from up on the dais. We knew we needed it, but we just couldn't figure out how to pay for it so that the residential ratepayers weren't paying for something that would benefit corporations. And I think you found an absolutely elegant solution to that. I know you've been working, how long have you been working on this particular agreement?
When did I get here? Four, four plus years ago?
Four years, okay. Well, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? Excellent, thank you.
And just to end the presentation, kind of where, where we're at right now and what our next steps are. So you're considering tonight, Chapter 100, bonds to provide a financing mechanism in lease structure for the property, turbines, and equipment, which is going to be located on city property. It does allow the power partners, the Independence Power Partners, to proceed with negotiating the terms of a phased PPA, phase one being two hundred megawatts, and then phase two being six hundred megawatts, and it allows for IPL to meet their planning reserve margin requirements from SPP. I think one thing to note on this is IPL will have the option to purchase the plant at a future date, offering the flexibility without the risk. So your next step tonight is to consider approval of the So your next step tonight is to consider approval of the Missouri Chapter 100 Plan as an option, not a requirement, to negotiate and generate the electrical capacity at the former Blue Valley Plant. I'm going to have David Martin come up with Gilmore Bell, the City's Bond Council, to go over the Chapter 100 Plan as he normally does with these.
Good evening. The item that is in front of you with respect to this hearing is the Plan for Industrial Development or Chapter 100 Plan that accomplishes what Charlie just described. And I'll give a brief overview of that plan and then take any questions with respect to it. In this circumstance, the plan itself is before council without the Chapter 100 Bond Issuance and accompanying documents. Those are still being negotiated and drafted and will come back at a later time, assuming the plan passes and implement those documents, put them up for approval separately. So the plan describes the acquisition, the city owns it, so the lease acquisition by the company of approximately 91 acres. That's the retired Blue Valley Power Station owned by the city. Currently has a $0 assessed valuation due to municipal ownership. It describes two phases that Charlie mentioned in which natural gas generating facilities will be constructed and equipped. And it describes a total investment of approximately $2 billion, of which approximately $12 million is personal property. It has three abatement components. The real property and improvements would be abated for a period of 20 years after completion of the project and during the construction period. So it ends up being about 22, maybe 23 years, depending on the length of the construction period to completion of the first phase. And that is 100% abatement of real property taxes during that period. Additionally, there will be a 100% abatement under the plan with respect to the personal property. And that is what we refer to as a rolling abatement, which means it starts for each item of personal property on the date that it is implemented at the site and runs from 20 years after that period. So then the property will roll off of the abatement and be replaced by other property. Additionally, the plan describes sales tax exemption on construction materials, which has become a common addition to abatement transactions in Missouri. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the plan.
Any questions? Please proceed.
I'm just going to reiterate the thing that we say up here all the time. Chapter 100 Bond does not obligate the city to pay anything back and we would not incur any ownership in this arrangement.
So...
Other than we own the land.
Right, so it will be within municipal ownership by the city for the duration of the abatement. And that's required by state law as a way to affect Chapter 100 abatement. There are protections for the city as being the owner, since it will be operated by a private company. So the lease will have built-in protections in the way of an indemnity requiring the company to cover any losses sustained by the city by virtue of its ownership. And then will also require insurance to be covered in order to cover the sovereign immunity waiver limits that the city might be subject to liability on the property. With respect to the bonds, you're absolutely right. Chapter 100 Bonds and what we refer to as a buy-your-own structure, where the company actually purchases the bonds, they do not involve any liability by the city for payments in the way of debt service to be made on the bonds. So the ultimate financing will be procured by the company from private sources and will not flow through the bonds.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions from anyone else? This is a weird question. Is there any limit to how much a city can issue in regards to Chapter 100 Bonds?
No, there's not a Chapter 100 upper issuance limit.
I mean, as long as it, as long as the market will buy them, let the market bear the, the risk then?
So again, on this type of a bond issuance, the company that's investing in the project, so Independence Power Partners, will itself purchase those bonds.
Right.
So they are both the obligor to make the bond payments under the lease and the obligee of those payments. So there's no risk of a debt service shortfall and it's not the market that's taking on the risk because the market isn't purchasing the bonds.
Okay, very good. Okay, excellent, I appreciate that. Anyone else further discussion? Okay, this is the fun part. It is a full, unless you have anything else, Charlie? This is a full public hearing, so we all know that everyone in here has an opportunity to share if they would like. So I will call it three times if anyone would like to come forward and talk about the Chapter 100 Bonds. You'd certainly have the opportunity to, so I'll open the public hearing and you'd have the opportunity to come forward and talk about it. So you can talk in favor of, opposition, or information purposes only. And please state your name and address, please.
Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive, Independence, Missouri 64057, in favor of. It was interesting because at the October 16th PUAB meeting, our IPL Director said, "As this board has come to understand, we cannot do without capacity." Now, he was talking about the repair of IPL Turbine J2, but the message applies here tonight as well. This power generation project shows the importance of, the important role that IPL plays to this community. IPL can't generate the energy needed for future projects to come forward. And as Councilmember mentioned, we did not want to incur bonds that could jeopardize and raise our rates. So this is a plausible solution to help with our financial growth and keep our rates low as well. The Sawville, Burns &amp; Mac and D&amp;K studies all said the same thing. IPL needs to generate to bring in large users to keep our rates low. So no more analysis paralysis. I truly welcome this, this additional generation project. Your approval is the first step in moving Independence forward. And I'd like to remind you too, that recently, within the last year, Evergi has announced that they are building, I believe it's two large gas-powered energy units and, and our plants. We are falling further and further behind. This project may not be an easy ticket out, but it certainly is a very good solution in keeping us running forward with moving what we want in our goals, economic development within the city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or just for information purposes only? And please state your name and your address, please.
Kevin Baird, 2312 Viking Drive. My comments tonight are my own and do not reflect those of my employer. Tonight, the city is starting the approval process for a massive new methane generation plant within our city limits. The city calls it economic development. I call it a sweetheart deal for big corporations and a raw deal for the families of independents. The developers get the profits, the gas traders get the fees and the people sitting in this room, we get the pollution, we get the volatility and we get the risk. But before we even get to the money, let's look at how the game is played. The city can say they've been working on this for years, but this deal was built in the dark. There were no town halls, no community workshops. There was virtually no effort to educate the people of Independence about the most significant energy project in IPL's history. The city's paid consultants last year told them plainly, "Do an integrated resource plan first." They said, "Plan before you buy," but the city has skipped the planning and jumped straight to the deal. And worse, the city is racing to lock this in, just months before voters go to the polls in April to decide on a charter amendment to create a new independent utility board. That board is supposed to be the one making these generational decisions. By rushing this process and treating this massive decision like a routine agenda item, the city is telling every voter in Independence that their voice doesn't matter. The city is strapping a 30-year anchor to that new board before it even exists. That isn't leadership, that is a betrayal of the public trust. The city claims this project brings reliability, but we do not have short memories. We all remember Winter Storm Yuri in February 2021. We remember sitting in the dark in the freezing cold while SPP mandated rolling blackouts. And the costs from that storm, they exploded as gas prices skyrocketed. IPL burned through $57 million in just one month and we paid for it through the fuel fee on our bills. This plan straps every ratepayer to that same volatile market for 30 years. Experts forecast gas prices will surge 50% in the next two years alone. And we have a rule in our rates, Schedule FA-1, that passes those fuel costs straight on to us. When gas prices spike in Texas, our bills spike here. And here's the wildest part, we are already living this nightmare. Why are our rates so high today? Because we are stuck paying off debt for legacy coal plants that are expensive to run and dragging down our balance sheet. Those old contracts are an anchor around our necks today. So why on earth would the city vote to swap a coal anchor for a gas anchor? By signing a power purchase agreement with this developer, the city is tethering us to the next stranded asset. The developer secures a guaranteed revenue stream for decades, but the ratepayers, we are contractually forced to pay the bill, even if that power becomes obsolete or too expensive to use. And while we take all the risk, let's look at what the developer gets. The city is offering a 100% property tax holiday for 20 years. Usually developers pay a pilot fee to make the city whole, but this plan says explicitly, no payments in lieu of taxes will be required. And it gets worse. Because of exemptions on construction materials, the city is agreeing to lose over $32 million in sales tax upfront. Remember that the next time they say there's no money for this or that. Finally, let's talk about what is right and wrong. It is shameful that in 2025, the city is even discussing building 15 new sources of pollution right here in our city, with four times as much expected to come online if they land their data center. And just down the street from Spring Branch Elementary School, the city is asking us to fill our neighborhoods with dirty air just to make a quick buck for a developer. And we can talk about where Evergi is, what Evergi is doing, but they're not building that in a city. They're not building that in Blue Springs or Lee Summit. If this council passes this ordinance in a few weeks, it will be endorsing a secret process, a tax giveaway, volatile bills and throwing more methane onto the climate fire. This plan fails on the math, it fails on the process and it fails on our values. I hope we'll use the, the time between now and the final vote to do the right thing. Please reconsider this deal.
Thank you. Anyone else, pardon me, anyone else want to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information purposes only? And please state your name and address, please.
Kelly Cannon, 17111 East 31st Terrace South. I really didn't plan on speaking about this issue, but I've read about private equity, buying power plants and the rates going through the roof. And as far as private equity buying things up, they bought up Joanne. They bought up a lot of the, the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and other stores around this town. And now they're defunct, they're gone because the debt was put on the companies while the private equity raped profitable businesses. And those businesses are no longer here to pay taxes, to offer employment, to make a city function because private equity came in. Now, whoever these gentlemen are, I'm not up here to say derogatory things about them. I'm just saying what I've read recently about private equity coming in, purchasing, buying, taking over and then the people who need those services pay through the nose. Now, can we get a guarantee that our rates aren't going to go up? I don't know. But I would be skeptical about this deal just from what little I've learned tonight. But I'll be reading more about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to come forward to speak on this issue?
I have a number of concerns.
Please state your name and address.
Cody Atkinson, 722 West Waldo Avenue. Number of concerns that I'm happy to share on a one-to-one basis. But I do have a concern that it does not appear that labor has been involved in these negotiations. We have yet to see any sort of outreach on who is going to be part of building this power plant. We are presumably going to move forward on a sales tax abatement. I want to make sure that we are also not having folks come in from out of state and building this. I want to make sure that any movement on this involves our labor here and that prosperity that hopefully happens is, is shared in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
25-107, First Reading, An Ordinance Approving a Plan for Industrial Development for a Power Generation Project Located at 21500 East Truman Road, Independence, Missouri, First Reading.
Thank you, and this brings us to ordinances and brings us to 25-103. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
25-103, Second Reading, An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 7755 and Ordinance Number 18924 Concerning Membership Criteria for the Independent Square Advisory Board, Second Reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25-103?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Madam City Manager, can you give us an synopsis of why we're doing this?
This board has had trouble having quorum for meetings and filling seats. It's currently scheduled to have nine members and its active members total six. So again, this recommendation moves it from nine to seven. So there would still be a vacancy to fill, but it would allow for meetings to actually take place for a quorum.
And how does this particular board get their members appointed?
Council appointees.
Okay, all right, that's all I have.
Thank you, anyone else on 25-103, please? Seeing no further discussion, Madam State Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 25-103 passes seven in favor, zero opposed, brings us to 25-104. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
25-104, Second Reading, An Ordinance Authorizing the Acceptance of a Grant for $1,993 from Eileen Normail Weir, sorry, Community Impact Grant for the Parks and Recreation Department, Second Reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Well, I think this is fantastic that we're getting this grant, so thank you very much for that. And interim City Clerk, could you please just, or City Manager, please just give us a, a brief update on how this came about and how, how it will help us? And I didn't mean to put you on the spot and I should have given you a heads up on this. Or we could ask our former mayor to come forward and...
Oh, no, I, I mean, she, of course, is welcome too as the one providing the grant, but...
Sure.
No, this provides dog water fountains at Santa Fe Park.
Very good.
With these funds, so very much appreciated.
And I know the former mayor is a big fan of animals and has helped a lot with the shelter and done a lot of work in that regard. So thank you very much for the work on this. Anyone else further discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam State Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 25-0, excuse me, 25-104 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25-105. Madam State Clerk, please proceed.
25-105, Second Reading, An Ordinance Finding Determining and Declaring the Necessity of Acquiring Utility Easements for the Cracker Net Creep Bank Stabilization Project. Project Number 302202, Authorizing the Negotiation and Eminent Domain Proceedings if Necessary, Approving the Plans and Specifications for the Project, Authorizing the Use of Experts as Needed, Authorizing and Directing the Execution of Documents and the Payment of Funds to Property Owners or Others Holding Property Rights in Conjunction with the Project, Second Reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on 25-105? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam City Manager, could you just speak to why we are investing these dollars, what the benefit is to the city?
Absolutely. So our string bank stabilization projects, we do when we have infrastructure that is at risk. So in this instance, we have sanitary sewer lines that are risking exposure above grade if this, the bank isn't stabilized. So this uses sanitary sewer fund dollars to go in and do that stabilization so that our infrastructure is maintained.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on 25-105? Seeing none, Madam State Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25-105 passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25-106. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-106, second reading, an ordinance amending Article 6 of Chapter 8 and Article 4 of Chapter 20 in the Independent City Code pertaining to the adoption of a revised procurement policy. Second reading.
Thank you. Any questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
So, I'm going to vote in favor of the procurement policy because it updates a lot of things that we need to have tidied up, but I would also like for this to get referred to audit and finance. I'm just asking because we're seeing inflationary pressures all over the place, I just want to be sure that our procurement policy escalates with inflation so that it doesn't have to keep coming back, and instead, we're thinking about how those dollar amounts increase over time. And if that's appropriate, based on the recommendation of audit and finance, that would be my recommendation, independent of today's vote.
Anyone else have further questions? Also in here, and I think I remember this, and Mr. Kovar might bring this to my attention, it talks about the limits of the city manager and what they can spend, and can you go back into the limits of this document and bring it up? I don't have it in front of me.
That's not what's being revised in this iteration. This is, this ordinance before you this evening is simply to align purchasing policy with the ordinance. We have this duplicative language in both of those places, and over the summer, we updated the policy, but the ordinance wasn't updated, so this is just aligning those two documents. I believe Councilwoman McCandless's request would include the limits and things like that, and that's the request to take to audit and finance, if I'm understanding correctly.
So, my question is somewhat accurate, is bringing those, because we changed the limit to $100,000 for the city manager for procurement limits.
Yes.
A few months ago.
Yes.
And this would bring the policy back into, to bring these two documents into agreement?
Correct.
Yes, that's exactly what this does. This doesn't make, this, what you're doing now just reconciles these two documents so that they match, which was the intent all along. You're not making any additional changes than what you already made back over the summer.
Okay.
So, this is just, purely just a reconciliation.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that clarification. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anyone else have further questions?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just to make sure I'm understanding, so the council would like the Audit and Finance Committee, and I just want to make sure, because I'm chair of that committee, I want to make sure I'm doing what you want to do, is to review the procurement policy as a total for potential ability to escalate based on inflation or some reasonable factor to be determined.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Be happy to look at that.
Anyone else on discussion on 25-106? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
No.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25-106 passes, six in favor, one opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-108, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from the State of Missouri through a recipient award from the Department of Health and Senior Services, which allocates $60,059.80 to the City of Independence, Missouri, for a maternal-child health program and adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19682, first reading. 25-109, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from the State of Missouri through a recipient award from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which allocates $15,500 to the City of Independence, Missouri, for a childcare health consultation program and adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19682, first reading. 25-110, first reading, an ordinance authorizing council action to execute an agreement with the Missouri Department of Social Services Family Support Division at Jefferson City, Missouri, for participation in the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program during fiscal year 2025-2026 and subsequent years through September 30th, 2028, and declaring an emergency, first reading. 25-111, first reading, an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to sign and execute for and on behalf of the city, a certain real estate purchase contract for the purchase of a certain tract of land commonly known as 18414 East Bunshu Road, for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the Bunshu Regional Detention Basin, project number 132501, for the sum of $10,580, and to execute all documents, disburse funds, and do all things necessary to consummate said purchase, first reading. 25-112, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R30/PUD High Density Residential Planned Unit Development to District R6 Family, Single Family Residential and District R6 PUD Single Family Residential/Planned Unit Development for the properties located north of Farmer Street, south of Nettleton Avenue, east of Spring Street, and west of Main Street, first reading. 25-113, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial and District C1 Neighborhood Commercial to District R6 Single Family Residential and R6/PUD Single Family Residential/Planned Unit Development for the properties along Dodgemont Avenue, north of College Street, in Independence, Missouri, first reading. 25-114, first reading, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District I1 Industrial to District R12 Two Family Residential for the property located at 1116 South Woodland Avenue and 1506 West 23rd Street South, first reading. 25-115, first reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast at 711 North Arapaho Street, in Independence, Missouri, first reading. 25-116, first reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit to operate a light equipment sales business at 1112 Dickinson Road, in Independence, Missouri, first reading.
Thank you. And Madam interim city manager, I think we need to go back to item number three, is that correct? That's an emergency, and we need to take action on that tonight.
Please do.
Okay. So, we need to do a second reading on item number three. So, Mr. Kovar, all we have to do is read that again and then take action on it.
Yes, sir.
Please proceed on 25-110, please.
25-110, second reading, an ordinance authorizing council action to execute an agreement with the Missouri Department of Social Services Family Support Division at Jefferson City, Missouri, for participation in the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program during fiscal year 2025-2026 and subsequent years through September 30th, 2028, and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I would like to add that as an emergency item, it does require a supermajority in order to pass, so that would be five votes instead of four.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on 25-110?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Just to clarify, what makes this an emergency?
Please proceed.
This is a timing issue for when the contract needs to be signed to be eligible for future liheep dollars. The existing contract expired on September 30th, and you only have so long for a grace period.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have further discussion on 25-110? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll, but do keep in mind it needs five votes in the affirmative for this to pass. Please proceed.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 25-110 passes, seven in favor, zero opposed. And this will bring us then to councilmember comments. And councilmember Fears, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's been a busy couple of weeks since our last meeting here, and today in particular was pretty much a full day of meetings from early this morning to right up to now. So, and I know we have a number of things coming up for the holidays, so want to just lift up one thing that we spent three hours on this afternoon, and that's the upcoming Parks Master Plan. That's a coming forward, will come forward to, for public presentation in January, and we made good progress, I think, on that today with the Parks Commission, and so that was, those were good meetings, but I just want to mention that more will be coming, and I think hopefully some good things will come out of that Parks Master Plan. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought, the floor is yours.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Wiley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing today. Saturday, the animal shelter had an event from 10:00 to 6:00. They had food trucks and some entertainment. Their goal was to adopt out 50 animals. At the end of the day, they ended up adopting 39, which is a massive amount. It's basically about what we adopt out in three weeks. We got it done in one day. So, last week, the shelter adopted out 50 animals, which is about half of the population in the shelter. So, I'm just thanking the staff and Best Friends Animal Society for helping with the event. I'm very happy to say that the shelter was the quietest I had ever heard it, and that the staff is going to be able to focus on some enrichment for the animals and take them on more walks. So, it was a good day at the shelter. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Wiley. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two weeks ago, we were fortunate to welcome Lieutenant Governor Wassinger and Senator Nicola, and they had a discussion about aging exploitation and aging support services. We're lucky that they're choosing our town as a place to hold those community forums and discussions. We hope they'll come back and do more of those. I was lucky to be invited to the Federal Reserve. I went to their Kansas City Economic Outlook. The room was full of economists and business leaders talking about what economic changes we can anticipate in the next couple of years in this area. Obviously, population changes are going to impact both Kansas and Missouri. There are some tech issues that you might be paying attention to that will have some impact on lots of aspects of our lives. But the one thing that every speaker talked about was, those who create electrical capacities, those communities are going to do the best because they're going to be able to determine their own future. So, I was encouraged to hear that discussion from the Federal Reserve. And then the last item I have is about the city manager search. You're probably sick of hearing about this, but I just want to keep bringing those milestones to you. Billy Owens, who is our representative from SGR, will be in town tomorrow. He'll be meeting individually with the council members to get their input. We'll be able to meet with groups of staff to get their input. And then we have two community focus groups who'll be able to spend some time with him. This, these focus groups represent business community, nonprofits, the faith community. It has a diversity of age and ethnicity, and it has representatives from all four districts. So, we felt like we put together good opportunities for him to hear from the community. Now, during those forums, council won't be present, staff won't be present, it'll just be an opportunity for him to have conversation from these pieces, then that will help inform the city manager job description and help us build our timeline. I will continue to come back with updates so that you know how things are moving along. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Perkins, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good time of year, favorite time of year, going into Thanksgiving and then to Christmas, which means fun stuff up on the square. Square lighting ceremony is this Friday at 6:00 PM. Music starts from the Music Arts Institute kids, start at 5:30. It's going to be a good time. December 5th is going to be the Living Windows. That's from 6:00 to 8:00. Music starts at 5:30, and I believe the lights and everything go on at 6:30. It's a fun time, I can't wait to have it. Hopefully, the weather's going to hold off decently. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And I just want to give a shout out to the high school ROTC, who put a Veterans Day parade on here last Saturday, and they had a great turnout, and there were a lot of folks from the community that came and saw the parade, and they just do a great job every year, and it was an idea that the high school ROTC brought to place three years ago, and they continue to do it, and they're already planning for next year, so that is terrific, and wanted to give them a shout out. So, with that being said, Madam interim city manager, the floor is yours.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
That is very easy. With that being said, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.